I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, first on the agenda is minutes approval, which is before I say in printed form. Move by Mr. Orr, second by Mr. Blake, that we approve the minutes before I say in printed form. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor signify as saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next on the agenda is the treasures report, which is again before I say in printed form. Move by Mr. Chaz, seconded by Mr. Royston. Many questions on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor signify as saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next on the agenda is bills payable with this month total three million, two hundred forty-six thousand, four hundred eighty-eight dollars and one cent.
Make a motion to pay bills before funds become available.
Sorry, move by Mr. Chaz, seconded by Mr. Blake, that we pay the bills as funds become available. Questions on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor signify as saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next on the agenda is the police report. Chief Tex.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a police report from November, uh, two thousand twenty-five. For the previous month, we responded to approximately eleven hundred and fifty-five calls for service. It was a relatively uneventful month, uh, except for the, uh, one incident over, um, East Lake Street on the twenty-ninth. An unknown suspect filed several rounds, striking residences and vehicles, people fleeing the area. Uh, we are still looking for any witnesses or anybody that might have information. You can contact us, uh, at the Texas Police Department, or you can also go through Crime Stoppers and Anonymously Report if you choose to. We appreciate any support from the community on that incident to help us with that case. Um, as you can see, uh, the dispositions over the month, um, they were relatively similar to years past. Uh, hundred seventy-eight traffic solvency's, a DUI, sixty total criminal arrests, nine of which were felonies, fifty-one misdemeanors. There were two hundred seventy-nine reports and had three hundred twenty-one FSRs. Um, and there's just a breakdown here every year to kind of make it a little easier to see. This year's past month and the year prior is the orange, just to give a nice visual and make it easier. Again, one district continues to be our leading, uh, month over month. For calls for service, we had a hundred and seventy-three, and one district, a hundred and twenty-six over the two, eighty-seven, sixty-eight, and three, and four. Um, not a whole lot last month, don't want to jinx us, but, uh, wasn't too bad of a month. And then community services was active, meeting with the school district, um, doing some recruiting for us, that we had our DEA take back, it was the most successful month. And working with SN4C, who's one of our strong sponsors for events such as the Youth Academy and some other stuff that goes throughout the year. Again, some quick pictures of the senior health fair that we opted out with, and, uh, we have our senior police picnic as well, um, which was a great success. It was nice to see a lot of people out there. Again, um, met with Athlo, and again, we had, uh, the Ninth Annual Coffee with a Cop Day. Starbucks hosted us over in the West Town side. Um, again, speeding, we still have some issues with speeding. We slow down. The options are already tickets, of course, um, there are some speeds, as you can see, where people are driving too fast, when you see some of those high speeds. Again, because in their signs, the difference between five miles an hour, um, in a crash can make the difference between a fatality and someone just being injured, um, in the neighborhood area especially. So please make sure you're doing the speed limit, because you really can save a life by, um, not speeding. And again, we had fifty-three crashes total for the month. Again, leading cause like every other month continues to be in its intention and distractions. So again, I know it's easy, your phone might ring, you might hear something, please stay focused on the road while you're driving, um, it'll help reduce those crashes. And I conclude the police report.
I entertain a motion to accept Chief Tex's police report. Second. Move by Mr. Thomas, seconded by Mr. Blake. Questions on the motion? All in favor signify as saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Appreciate it. Next on the agenda is, um, public hearing, portion of our agenda. And first one is the motion to approve. Oh, I'm sorry, Kate, I'm sorry. I didn't see you sitting there. Kate Brokaw's Main Street up there.
Thank you. Uh, we actually have a lot of good things coming up for the holidays. Starting Saturday, we have our lamppost decorating contest. So every lamppost from the corners of East Main Street up through the railway tracks have been sold. So you'll begin to see Main Street looking very, very festive. It is a, a contest, so on, starting on, um, Small Business Saturday, which is on November twenty-ninth, we can go to our page at, um, Middletown Main Street, uh, our Facebook page, and do some voting for your favorite one. So also on November twenty-eighth is our Christmas tree lighting. Mayor, once again, we would be very honored to have you light our Christmas tree on Cochrane Square. And we'd like to invite the council as well.
The honor would be mine, Kate.
Thank you. So we will have the Christmas tree lighting, the official Christmas tree lighting, we will have caroling, um, done by some whalers from our local schools, and hot chocolate, and the community is invited to come out for that. And then all of this is then gearing up to our holiday parade on December sixth.
Great, okay. I'll accept the motion, um, to approve the, um, update of Middletown Main Street. Move by Mr. Chaz, seconded by Mr. Orr. Any questions from anybody? Well, Kate, present it.
Kate, what time is the tree lighting? Four twenty-eight?
Starts at five thirty. Yes, thank you.
I just want to say, trip a tree on me, it seemed like it went off really well.
It did, yeah, so went very well. Thank you.
Kate is everywhere. Any other questions on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor signify as saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Kate, appreciate it. Okay, next on the agenda is the public hearings portion, and first is, um, motion to approve request for Gemma Root First, two thousand twenty-six, for Hummers Parade. Mr. Strepler.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm Jack Strepler, uh, here to request your approval of the annual, uh, Middletown Hummers Parade, New Year's Day. Uh, I've also submitted the application, uh, to DLD, um, to register that for the use of, uh, Main Street and, and Broad Street, town, uh, excuse me, state right-ofways. We propose to start at one P M. It's our traditional route, starting over here at South Cass and, uh, Cochran, and on down to Park Place, out to Broad, up to the four corners, west to Scott Street, and then back to the place of beginning. I hope you all will come out and, uh, and watch or work. March with us. Please familiarize yourself with the, uh, safety guidelines especially. Please do not allow anybody to throw candy or anything in the streets that would entice children, uh, just as a matter of safety. And I'll pause there. Um, take any questions and ask for your support.
I entertain a motion to accept and approve the request for Mr. Strepler for the, um, two thousand twenty-six Hummers Parade on January first, starting at one P M. So move. Move by Mr. Royston, seconded by Mr. Chaz. Questions, council? Questions from anyone? Hearing none. All in favor signify as saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you very much. See you there.
You got it. Next on the agenda is, uh, twenty-seven, twenty-nine East Main Street. It's historic review of the building, exterior renovation.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmen. Uh, appreciate your time here. I'm Justin Sauerwine. I'm, uh, one of the owners of Wyman Real Estate, the, uh, proud owners of twenty-seven, twenty-nine East Main Street. We're looking for some approval to change the cedar siding, which has been decrepiled and, uh, kept cupping for years now, and change it to some vinyl siding and get the building looking fresh again. Brought a sample of the siding here, our intentions are to go with gray, and we'll pass that around.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to, um, approve the request for twenty-seven, twenty-nine East Main Street, for historic review and the building exterior renovation, and note that it did go to planning and zoning. Planning and zoning recommended the request unanimously. Mr. Royston. Move by Mr. Royston, seconded by Mr. Blake. Council, questions on the motion?
The brick is today is brown, is it not?
That the brick will stay the same color that it is today. The only thing we're planning on changing is all the cedar siding.
Is there any reason why you chose gray?
We thought it was a neutral color. Um, my understanding is we have full discretion to pick the color.
Just doesn't seem to match too well, brown, but.
Any other questions, council? Questions from anyone?
Yes, sir.
My question is all, also about, uh, the color, um, cedar, something, the cedar red as it is stands there rather than the gray. Would the council member, when he's finished looking at the gray, hold up the sample? So that we in the audience can see it? It might look a little different than what's on the screen.
Yeah, so that is not gray. Uh, silver gray is in the bottom right corner. That's just a example of potential siding. That's an Arctic.
That's not the color of the siding?
That's not the color of the siding. It's just one of the examples. If you look in the, uh...
That's not the color of the siding?
No, that is, uh, I believe Arctic, and if you look at the bottom right corner, you'll see silver gray.
Oh, that's a little, not as pronounced as it seems.
Yes, exactly, yeah. It's a little lighter in shade, pretty neutral. And, uh, part of the last meeting, we took a look down Main Street, the buildings to the right, left, perpendicular, all of them vinyl siding, white and gray.
You can see, actually, the cover of this has the gray with the brown on it. It's almost exactly what you'd see there.
That's, that's right.
Cover right here, that side.
It's, uh, it's gray on both sides of the building, yeah, on Main Street.
You took it, you don't want to go dramatic, because then it just looks, you know, blah, so you want to have that color change.
Any other questions, do you have, any other questions?
No, just prefer the color similarly to as it is.
Your house probably could do siding, so, I mean, yeah, you should put it on your house, as big as it is, it's good.
Yes.
Any other questions on the motion? It'd be a tremendous improvement, grew up in that building, um, where Sarah and Jackie sub-shopped, so, yeah. Okay, no questions? All in favor signify as saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Good luck, appreciate you doing, taking the effort to improve it. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is, uh, one nineteen Patriot Drive, Suite D. It's a conditional use permit request for a construction company, T and G Construction LLC, to locate in an M I zone C U dash thirteen, dash two five. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, my name is Lauren Green. I am the owner of T and G Construction. Uh, we applied for a conditional use permit for one nineteen Patriot Drive. We will be using this space for our office to store our materials, and occasionally have customers come in, sign contracts, view materials. We won't store any file items, materials, or anything of that nature.
Okay, um, it did go to planning and zoning. Planning and zoning recommended again unanimously, and we approved. So, um, we have a sketch before us, and I'll entertain a motion to approve the conditional use permit request for one nineteen Patriot Drive, Suite D. Moved by Mr. Sherman, seconded by, um, Mr. Thomas. Questions on the motion, council? Questions from anyone? Hearing none. All in favor signify as saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Good luck, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Next on the agenda is ten thirty-five Industrial Drive. It's preliminary major demand development plan for seven one-story buildings and a plan for a flex space use, totally three hundred fifteen thousand square feet. Uh, both area with associated site improvements to be constructed on forty-two to the thirty-three, western line of Seaters, in an M I zone, axing. Yes, sir, Mr. Wood.
Good evening, my name is Steve Wood. I'm with Apex Engineering, the site engineer for this project. Um, this is the plan we actually presented last month, uh, for concept level. Um, preliminary plan, as Mayor, uh, already stated, seven, seven buildings, three hundred fifteen thousand square feet. Uh, large city buildings are fifty thousand, or six of theirs, um, are situated such that we have loading spaces for multiple tenants, uh, in each building. Um, we have two hundred fifty-five total parking spaces, uh, traditional truck loading, uh, along the back of each building. Um, and then the, uh, this project's located in the West Town T I D. Uh, we've, we've taken this to plus, and as well as, uh, presented to the towns engineer, for which we have comments, uh, which were relatively generic. Kristen, if you could, can you pop up, just to give you guys a, an idea of what the buildings may look like here?
During construction.
Uh, this is just a typical, um, image of during construction for, uh, building, uh, being placed. Just a generic, uh, building of what we expect on this site. And then here's the, this will be the final product. Um, this is tucked back on Industrial Drive, for you folks that don't know, um, relatively quiet, it's back there behind Home Depot. Um, there's a loop route for just a lot of industrial usage back there, so, uh, I'll take any questions for that.
I wouldn't use Home Depot as a reference, but... It's right across from our substation, across from the construction company, outbuildings that are there now.
Yes.
The top of the hill on Industrial Drive, next to S D A and their substation.
That's correct.
Okay, I want to entertain a motion to approve the, um, request for the preliminary land development plan as presented for ten thirty-five Industrial Drive. Second, move by Mr. Orr, seconded by Mr. Blake. Questions on the motion, council?
It's not a question, it's much of a statement. I know that we've looked at some of the speeded areas in town, and industrial, sometimes a little bit higher than the, uh, Chief Bailey going up there, sometimes the speed there, we just got to make sure you stay in it.
Chief Tex is well aware of that. I mean, coming out onto Industrial Drive, we're talking about, yep. Two entrances on Industrial Drive, the top entrance is it perpendicular, or right across from the one that goes into?
It is generally perpendicular. It's, it's slightly offset, um, but that's only so that we could get the geometry internally to the site, so that trucks can make their movements.
Okay, so we're talking about the one...
Yeah, the one there to the right, yeah, the first one. That's correct.
Okay. And the existing store order management plan, or pond, will stay as is, and then we'll get another store order pond at the front, right?
Yeah, we're gonna see, uh, several, several ponds here, that, yep, exactly. It's a discharge. We have, uh, two separate stream lines that, that run on the solidly border of the site, and then we have one in the northeast.
And then we're working with you to get an easement, uh, along the property line to be able to get to our lift station in the back.
Yeah, there's presently an easement, and then we'll maintain that, uh, like creating a paved, paved area.
Doing a little bit bigger easement, right, Morris? Been discussing, been discussing. Okay, um, questions on the motion?
Just that one that you maybe want to look at. If you're looking at the building for the location of the handicap, um, parking spaces, it seem a little bit out of, like, generally they're in the front of the building. So I don't know if that's something you want to look at as far as location of those, but...
So dependent on how the, uh, tenants get split on this building, I mean, you, you could see some modifications. So the way we break out the parking specifically here is, is such that we, we make an assumption for the uses. But yes, you're right, if there's more tenants for each building, you're probably gonna see either more handicap, or they'll be separated differently. Depends how many users end up in each building.
Yeah, just through the distance of the, let's say, your, where your entrance is toward that parking space.
Yeah, right now, we're envisioning there could be five separate entrances, so it might be better spaced, from what I understand here. Thank you.
Any other questions, council? Questions from anyone? Hearing none. It go to planning and zoning. Planning and zoning recommended again unanimously to approve the, uh, preliminary major land development plan. So all in favor signify as saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, appreciate it, thank you. Next on the agenda is ten twenty-three Bumper Hill Road. It's for a record major land development plan for five flex buildings totaling two hundred fifteen thousand, five hundred and one feet in an R three, C three zoned area. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Annie Lachale, Development Manager with Saint John Potter, he's for the developer for the project. And like you said, we're here for our final record major land development approval. We came for, actually, it's been back twice, in April and in August, for preliminary and revised preliminary plan approval. I'm happy to answer any questions, yeah.
Okay, I want to entertain a motion to get it on the floor, and then we can open it up to questions. Um, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the record major land development plan. Moved by, um, Mr. Thomas, seconded by, uh, Mr. Sherman. Questions from council on the motion? It's the same plan that went before us when we did preliminary back in August.
Yes.
Questions, council? Any questions from anybody? Yes, ma'am.
Um, Phyllis Schultz, I'm, I live in, uh, Spring Arbor. Is this part of the apartments? That they're gonna do, that's the buildings for the businesses that are gonna be with those apartments?
Yep, yep. This, the plan shares the businesses on the right side, coming in like we talked about. They'd be on the right side, and then the, um, the rest of the development will be on the other side.
Okay, just checking, thank you.
No, this is it, yes. Remember, we talked about the business would be on the right side, separated from the residential. And then that road goes straight through to come out through Middletown Village. Any other questions? All in favor signify as saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried. It was easy, ride all the way up there. Nice to have you. Uh, next on the agenda is motion to adopt ordinance fifteen dash ten dash O one to amend chapter one forty-five of the town's Middletown Code of Ordinances to adopt particles two, sediment and store order management in Article three, store order management facility workforce, and drainage system maintenance. Mr. Denrick.
As requested by Denrick in our, um, re-delegation review, they asked for us to codify our current seven store order regulations, store order management maintenance guidelines and before, so this is putting our current regulations actually in our code of ordinances, further recommendation of our order.
Okay, well, I'll entertain a motion to accept the town manager's recommendation along with Demrex for the, um, adoption of ordinance twenty-five dash ten dash O one, to amend chapter one forty-five of Middletown Code of Ordinances. So move, second. Move by Mr. Blake, seconded by Mr. Royston. Um, questions, council, on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor signify as saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next on the agenda is the motion to adopt resolution twenty-five dash eleven dash O one to authorize entry into a master equipment lease with M and T Bank.
Uh, so we put this out, uh, based on the capital aid that was ever budgeted and approved in July. Uh, it's a master lease, uh, for one million, one hundred thirty thousand dollars for those pieces of equipment. We put it out the bid, and recommendation was to award it to M and T Bank. That's recommendation, we're financing, capital financing, lease financing, the M and T Bank.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the town manager to adopt resolution twenty-five eleven O one to enter into a master equipment lease with M and T Bank totaling one million, one hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Move by Mr. Chaz, seconded by Mr. Chaz, uh, Mr. Royston. Questions on the motion?
I'm gonna abstain for professional relationships, I'll be simple.
Questions from anyone? Hearing none. All in favor signify as saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried. I noted that Mr. Sherman abstained. Next on the agenda is, um, motion to adopt the resolution twenty-five eleven O two, um, for declaring the intent for a tax exempt harbor.
This resolution, um, allows us to go out to issue tax exempt on three and buttersus for the purchase of the property across the street. Um, and then it's also, if there's any calls associated by the town, parents building, and whatever we need to do, it's a little bit if we need to, with the seven hundred thousand, so...
I'll entertain a motion to adopt resolution twenty-five eleven O two, declaring the intent for tax exempt harbor as recommended by town manager, Mr. Denrick. Move by Mr. Blake, seconded by Mr. Orr. Questions on the motion, council? Anyone? Hearing none. All in favor signify as saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next on the agenda is unfinished business. Mr. Thomas. Mr. Sherman.
No, sir.
Mr. Orr.
No, sir.
Mr. Chaz.
No, sir.
Mr. Blake.
No, sir.
Mr. Royston.
No, sir.
Councilman?
No, sir.
Anyone on unfinished business? Yes, ma'am.
Hi there, I'm just before Yogan tonight to respectfully ask that, um, the trees that we've been talking about for three years, um, get planted between the Y and the neighborhood, um, get planted this year before the snow flies, if there's any snow, um, the, we... The grant was applied for in January of twenty twenty-five, the money, it was a matching grant. The federal government pulled their funding, so that grant did not happen, but the town had committed to spend the five thousand dollars if they got the grant, and just so that we can spend that money this year, so we don't have to wait another year to put in the twenty-five trees, um, that we've identified. Thank you.
Wasn't the grant, then we approved the matching if it passed, and what about the grant?
Yes, and the grants...
So that was a condition of us giving the five thousand, right?
Well, it was, but through no fault of anyone's, it's not that we didn't get the grant, it's that the federal government pulled the funding, and the state wasn't awarding any grants this year. And it's, it's uncertain if any grant will ever happen in the future, only because of, um, funding issues that are happening right now.
Um, okay, I... I want to go back and take, I think the condition of the grant was that if we awarded the five thousand matching, it was a matching grant, right?
Yes, so the district, the, the town would have to put up five thousand dollars, and the state would give, um, um, the state would give the town five thousand dollars, and so we were looking at fifty trees instead of twenty-five, and so we've cut it back down to what would have been the town's, um, um, contribution.
I think we're gonna have to take a look and see what the motion was. If the motion was the condition that the state gave it, that we give it the five, we'll have to do it as a separate issue. And we can't vote on unfinished business, but...
Okay. I'm not sure that ever came, that actual grant came before council, I'm not, I don't remember.
The fact that we would match it, they did. The fact that we would put in the grant, and then they gave that we would match it, and that was a motion to support the grant, I think, right?
Um, well, I've been here pretty much every month for the last three years, and I don't remember that, but, uh, I'd be more than happy to go through the minutes.
We just had, uh, you know, I don't, I don't have... Well, Morris, do you remember what the grant was? What, was it a matching grant, the state gave?
There was, it was, there was a matching component to this, so...
We'll have to check in and do this, it's a separate item, um, for us to fund five thousand dollars for, what'd you say, twenty-five trees?
Um, it was fifty. Um, originally, well, when we, when we did this three years ago and put in some trees, uh, we used a vendor, it ended up being more expensive, and the plan was this time for, um, the town to plant them, so that it would be much less expensive, that everyone would get more for their money.
But the total amount was fifty for ten thousand, and you just mentioned twenty-five for five.
Correct.
Okay, just breaking this up down, okay. Okay, well, we... Okay, well, we can take a look at addressing your request and come back next month. Then we'll get, call up and get it on the agenda, so we can discuss it then.
All right.
Um, so we can vote on it when it's appropriate for, um, as an agenda item. Any other unfinished business, so... Okay?
Thank you.
Okay. Any other unfinished business? Any new business? Mr. Thomas.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Sherman.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Orr.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chaz.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Blake.
Yes, sir.
Um, last day for more yard vice pickup by Casella is Monday, November twenty-fourth.
We'll resume again in March.
Okay. Do you leave any, any press notes on the website?
Yes.
Yes, sir, will be.
I think it is, but I'll make sure to, and we're going to put it on Facebook and blast everybody with it. And I think it's April here. I think it's April, April six.
Yeah, April twenty-five is what Ryan said today before we... Mr. Royson.
Yes, sir.
Counsel.
Oh.
Anyone? New business?
Mr. Orr. I'd like to make a motion that we enter executive session so we can discuss personality matters, um, and the competencies of individuals employed.
Moved by Mr. Orr, seconded by, um, Mr. Chaz. We enter executive session. Personnel legal issues, all in favor signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.